All right, we'll start this by February 13th, Special School Board meeting. We're at Spock at High School and we'll start, we'll open up. Well, the first thing I need to do is review the agenda, so do I hear a motion to review the agenda?
Seven.
Thank you, Ms. Thursday, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thursday, all those in favor, any questions or comments? All those in favor say yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, all right, I wish to pass that though. Hi, and if you choose to have a small sample, does it have a small sample? Thank you very much.
Chairman Cross, I'm sorry to interrupt, could you have, move the microphones a little closer?
Will you stand with me for a moment, I'm sorry, please. I would like to invite the United States of America and to review all of the reports and statements from our action under that in this law of the Jersey Justice for all. All right, at this time, I'm going to pass it over to the chair of this meeting.
Is it green?
It's orange.
Press it one time quickly, that'll unmute it.
How about now?
That one's muted now.
How about now? Good morning. I want to just start by thanking you all for taking time out of your day to do this. I know this is extra on top of what you would normally be doing today, so thank you for taking the time to give us and share your thoughts on some of the policies that we have presented. It's just a starting point. I really think, the more I look over parts and pieces of these, and if you look, you can see I've got stuff highlighted, I've got stuff checked off, I've got, I've got stuff. So I have kind of a starting point, but we want to talk with you all, just to get an idea of, just like, we'll start with some basic things on like library collection, I think, just asking you all to share about how you build your collections, things like that, and then we'll get into, I think, the policy things that you have seen in here that you're like, heck no, don't do that, that's a terrible idea, or like that, that's something that we can all live with, we think that is a good thing. So those are the kind of, that's kind of where we're going today, I think. Yeah, how, let me start with just some basic questions. I mean, I know all, all of our members probably have some questions at some point that they'll throw out, but I've kind of got a couple of lists to start with. First question is, if you all could share how you all, you all can take turns, maybe, I don't know if you've elected a, somebody to kind of do a general broad overview, if you could share maybe how, like every year, you all have given money by the county, can you share how much you're giving, and how you go about selecting books to purchase, how often you make those purchases, and a little bit of a process in how you, you can't pick them all, right, because we have limited budgets, so how do you go about picking what does go into your collection? Look at the floor, just, do you want me to pass the mic? You all can, okay.
Before they answer your question, I think the libraries would just like to introduce themselves, so that it seems a little more personal, maybe you don't know them, I know some folks have come to their libraries, but, so let me give an opportunity just to go down, and then I'll turn the microphone, I think, over to Tim to share some things and then I'll answer those questions.
Okay, I'm Patty Evans, I graduated from Turner Ashby many years ago. I taught French and Spanish at Broadway High School for twenty, excuse me, nineteen years, and I'm a librarian at Broadway for two years, and for nineteen at Turner Ashby.
Hi, I'm Amy Johnson, I'm actually from page twenty, so I didn't graduate from a Rockingham County school, but I did go to Bridgewater College and students went to Broadway High School in ninety-six. And I moved to Northern Virginia after that to start my teaching career, but I really missed the bounty and wanted to come back and raise my kids here. So I taught English for twenty-two years and decided that I wanted to be in a position where I could reach and affect more lives. So as a librarian, for the past five years, I've been able to build relationships with students through, yeah, but literature, that I feel has impacted a lot of lives.
Hi, my name is Jessica Kitta, and I am the librarian at Elton Middle School. I graduated from James Madison University, and I began my teaching career in Stan City, where I taught sixth grade English for four years, before moving to Mountview Elementary. And so I was a fifth grade teacher at Mountview Elementary, and now I have been in the library for the last nine years, and it has been the most impactful work I have got to do with students to date, because instead of a family of twenty students each year, I now have over six hundred, who I get to meet, build relationships with, and help them experience the level of learning.
I'm Erin Walker, and I'm the librarian at East Rock High School, I graduated from Spotswood. I taught in Lake County for a while, and then I moved to Columbia, teaching third English for four years to East Rock, and it's the absolute dream job being a librarian.
Tim Luthell, I'm a Broadway grad, back in the day, I, I graduated from JMU student teaching at Wilbur Pence, and then I landed there in seventh grade English for twenty years. Made the transition to the library at TA three years ago, I think that the best part of that is that I got to follow my kids up to TA, it's been fun.
Mary Son Frank, I'm the librarian at J. Frank Bilyer, Broadway graduate, twenty-six years of teaching, seventeen as a special ed teacher, five elementary degrees at Bilyer, and I got lucky enough to get the job as a librarian, this is my ninth year as a librarian, and I love it.
I'm Amy Rupke, I'm the librarian at Mountview Middle School, I'm a Spotswood, Spotswood graduate, I then graduated from JMU and got my masters in counseling at Eastern Middle League University, and started my career as a finance counselor for Harrisburg City. I then moved to Coltrane's Library for six years, and then I've been at Mountview for nine.
I'm Julia Hall, I graduated from University of Rock School in Fairbanks County, and raised my three children, who all graduated from Turner Ashby High School, here in Rockingham County, great place to raise your children, and I was a school counselor also, graduated from JMU, an elementary school, and then got, earned my endorsement for school library, and I've been a school librarian for nineteen years at Wilbur Pence Middle School, love it, my favorite job ever.
Would appreciate, the, the greatest to say just a couple of things before we dive into your specific questions, if that's okay. Like I said, I'm, I'm Tim, and we would, would like to thank you for the opportunity to be included in today's meeting, we appreciate the opportunity to give voice to this process. I think a lot of the shock, and, and the hurt and the stress that, that we experienced kind of came from, from the fact that there were some decisions that were, that were made, that struck us a little blind about issues that, that we weren't, weren't as aware of. We as librarians support students and their families, we absolutely believe in parental rights, and we encourage absolutely every parent to be involved in their student shooting life. We work hard to meet the needs of our students and to address the concerns of parents, so we really sincerely appreciate this opportunity to give input and to collaborate on, on solutions to the issues that you all are currently working through. Thanks for the invitation to be here. As librarians, we don't oppose reconsideration of books. Whether our concerns, we welcome them, and we recognize that to otherwise would just be, well, an exercise in futility, that would be denying our own fallibility as individuals. The challenge policies that we all have in place are there exactly for that contingency. None of us wants inappropriate materials on the shelves of our libraries, that's why we have those reconsideration policies, to give voice to parents and to protect students. If we make a mistake, that's why we have those things. We certainly can, and then hopefully will, have discussions about how we go about meeting the needs of a collection that provides the breadth and the depth that it should, and in a high school situation, to meet the needs of that missing freshman, and, and yet that, that fifth year senior who's already married. What we all desire is an opportunity to have a personal conversation with a parent when there is concern. Most of us have never had a book challenged, it's my understanding there have been four formal challenges in the last ten years. I, I hear you saying, I appreciate you having said in the past that you see us as professionals. To me, this is reminiscent of my days in seventh grade English, and when I taught a wrinkle in time, or another, another text that I used to highlight something that the parent had a concern and expressed them to my principal or, or it never happened, but it had been expressed to a superintendent, or a supervisor, or a school member, that was sent back to me, and I was asked to engage with that parent. And, and whenever that happened, I was able to meet with that parent and either allay their fears, or come up with a solution that satisfies them, every single time. Most of us here, you heard, we've given a large chunk of our lives to Rockingham County and this school system, some of us have given the entirety of our professional careers to this system. We would never, we would never seek the heart of a kid, that is never our goal. We would never pursue to parent, that is not our goal. Our job is to educate, and we do that well. We would love to hear your concerns, and I appreciate you jumping in with that, because we feel like there are solutions to the, to the, the questions that have been raised, we feel like there are solutions that, that we can all agree on, and, and find to be effective for students and parents and librarians and teachers, and all stakeholders involved. And so again, I, I thank you for today's conversation, and we want you to know that we are open to this dialogue now and as we move forward.
I think, I want to, we've got a nine forty-five with y'all's group, okay? So, we want to be able to ask questions, give feedback, just let this be shared out today, so thank you for sharing with us, but we're at nine sixteen now, so we want to be able to hear as much information back from you guys as we can, and so, Ms. Thursday, if you'll repeat the question so we can get back and get going on this, because I want to get as much feedback from you guys as we can, and we don't have a whole lot until nine forty-five.
Thank you for sharing that, and for sharing a little bit about yourselves and your careers. My, my first, just a starting question, tell me about how you all, tell me how much money you're giving each year to spend, some of you all do book fairs, which also adds to the collection, and then just a little bit about how you decide, how to weigh decide, there's thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of books, right? So, just go ahead and give a little bit of insight into how to select, how to carry it down. I think we're curious to know, do you make these decisions, like does each school say years ago fifteen books, I know it's more than that, years ago fifteen books combined this year, and another school says, can you do fifty combined? Is there a collective, like the middle school kind of decides together, high school decides together, just kind of share a little bit about that process for you all.
I'll just start, and tell you what I know, we have forty-seven hundred dollars in, in our, our budget that comes from the county for books, we don't hold book fairs at the high school, what?
I think we don't have that.
Oh, am I right? That's right. We don't hold book fairs, we do some fundraising on, on the side to try and supplement that, that, that covers books and everything else that, that we would, would purchase from the library. As far as deciding what books, there would not be a universal list that all high school librarians we share, a big part of it has to do with trying to, to curate texts that meet the needs of our populations, and if you look at the population of Turner Ashby High School, certainly we share a lot of commonalities, but there are a lot of differences, say, to, to be struck. And so, where I am looking for, for many of the same texts, I'm also looking for, for some, some texts that are different. We do often talk, a big part of when we get together for incentives is to share books and, and books that we've read, and books that, that our, that our students are engaged with, and it's like, oh yeah, you've got to have this one, you know, this, this is a great one, but when, when students make recommendations, teachers make recommendations, we will, I, I spend a lot of time in the library journal, reading the, the reviews, some of the positive, some of the not so positive, as far as books that they've looked at, we look at award winners, sort of award winning books, consider all of those, and, and once we compile a list, Patty and I, we're co-librarians, and we keep a, a running list of, of books that we're considering, and then we will go through and, and look at typically, Title Wave is a great resource that we have access to and use that allows us to look at professional reviews of those books, and we'll, we'll read those, paying attention to age range, age range recommendations and those sorts of things. There are other, there are sometimes other, other resources that I will, I will check and I'll, I'll reference, but we, we made those decisions about what books fit our library and, and fit our populations, and those recommendations can come from a wide range of places, but ultimately, like we dig into what is, what is known about those books, the professional reviews are a big thing that we rely on before ordering those. Certainly, we read as many as we can, but that's, that's, you know, literally the impossible task to do. Title Wave is, is part of all that, and I believe it's something that the county, it likes, is provided to the county, and what they do is, is, part of what they offer is, is they compile some of those, so we don't have to have a subscription to all the different professional reviews, kind of all their multiple sources of access.
Hi, I'm going to speak on behalf of the middle school, but I also know that many of us here have brought our collection development policies, and at least we're all sent to Katie Lapira, but I think that's going to answer a lot of your questions, so at this time, we have the permission to come forward and give you our collection development policies, which hold many of the answers to the questions you have regarding our selection policy, the frequency in which we select, and how we determine what texts go into our libraries. So at this time, say, can I give you that?
Just a funding answer, Sarah, to your question, the libraries in our schools receive money based on a formula, actually Dr. Shiplett and I came up with that formula early on in my tenure in this role. Years ago, libraries got federal funding, that was cut out, what's that called, Patty? Title, something, Title Five, that no longer is available, so the county provides funding based on student populations, so each year when I do the budget, which actually now is Donna Abernathy's budget, but I help her with the library portion of that budget, we look at those formulas because our student populations change, so it's per pupil. I think, and again, I don't have it in front of me, but I can provide it later, it's a little over seven dollars, I think is the number we use, and you have to remember that with inflation, we are well underfunding libraries, the cost of books has risen dramatically, a single part of that book, or if you're looking at, in particular, elementary schools who are hermit bound books, so that there's a law of our life, and we're better using our resources if we think it's a book that's going to stay, like an award winner, the Caldecott, the Newberry, and so forth.
Many of you all have this information right off the top of their head, and how many, in your libraries, based on your student population, how many books per student do you have? You have all bars?
We have about eight.
Eight per student?
Per student, or actually, if you look at fiction and nonfiction.
Is that, seven, eight per student? And that's in slip.
The American Association of School Librarians, it means anywhere between ten and twenty per student.
Yeah, I think I read this one somewhere, so that's in slip, okay. When, tell me what happens for you when a parent, or if a parent comes to you with concerns about sexually explicit information, since you have said, you know, not everybody's encountered a chan, you know, a challenger or less. I know, I have at the elementary level, and it was still, it was minor, right? But I went to the library and she's, it's not, that's right, that's right. It's not you. It was before you, and before that, I don't know. Anyway, there was a book that came to my attention because the kids were giggling over it, and I, I, you know, I was like, you know, and so I looked at it, and it maybe had some information that was, I mean, it was, it was okay, but I was like, hmm, so I went to the library, had a nice conversation about it, we disagreed, I can't, I really can't, this is like maybe, gosh, ten years ago, I can't remember what happened to that book, but we, we did have a conversation, kind of what happened soon after that was all the, the three boys were Googling things, right, as they do. And so, so all that to say, what does that look like for you if you've encountered it? If you, you know, a parent comes and, and a book and says, here's some sexually explicit information, this is certain content that's really concerning to you, what do you say?
I'd like to speak to that first. I, I was a, an English teacher, like I said, for years, and have been a librarian for five, and when I was an English teacher, teaching lots of novels, parents would often come to me and say, I don't want my child to read that book, and I would say, oh, well, here's another book, are you comfortable with this? So there were always, you know, there were always conversations, and as a librarian though, complaints have come in the form of social media posts that my son has drawn my attention to, so as a librarian, not once have, has anyone called to have a conversation with me, but I have been a victim of, of complaints on social media that, that my son brought my attention to.
Nope.
That I addressed with that person, and that person and I were able to come to an agreement, but it's only after I approached him and let him know that we're human beings, and when our books are brought to the attention of social media without first bringing them to us in a conversation, you know, that's, that's difficult for us.
I think I speak for most of us when I say we all welcome parent conversations, just doesn't matter if it's in the classroom, I welcome parent conversation, open dialogue, and the library will do the same thing. I echo what Ms. Johnson said, in my nine years at Elton Middle School, I have not had a parent formally come to me specifically to discuss concerns with any items in my library, so I welcome those conversations, and would gladly have those if parents would love to come to me with concerns.
Why do you, yeah.
Why do you think that is? Why do you think, because Ms. Johnson said you know, and you know that they're causing a problem, you know, have a parent question about, so if knowing that, why do you take your parents out? I don't mind you, I just, from your perspective, it's definitely there, so why do you take your parents out? There's a parent who chooses to be the first.
So I think that it depends on the parent, because when I came to East Rock High School last year, I had a parent, I am a community member, and I have gone to school with many of the parents that I have as students in my library, and I had a parent reach out to her over the weekend, and I told her I'd get back to her on Monday about a concern that she had, so I sat and had a long conversation with her on the phone about the particular concerns that she had about a book her daughter had checked out. I explained to her that our library is meant to serve students who are ages fourteen to twenty, because it is a high school population. We talked about how she could help her child select books that were in alignment with the family values that they had, I showed her how she could check, the checkout history of her students' books, I asked her what she wanted me to take going forward, whether it was making sure that her daughter was not checking out any books that I was aware of that would conflict with their family values, but letting her know that I had not read any physical books in the library, and she also needed to know and keep a record of what her child was reading. The book that she actually brought to my attention, when I looked at it and measured it against my selection policy, I decided to, to remove that book from the library, because it was not in alignment with the selection policy that I had written for the library, and so, when the parents come to us with concerns, it opens dialogue, and it gives us a chance to go through the consideration process that we have all written into our selection policies, and I think that all of us, the hardest thing to do, and the most important thing for a child's education, is for the people who are interacting with a student in the school, is to reach out and talk to the parents. Every single time I've had a glowing moment in classroom, or a terrible moment in classroom with the child, I would reach out to the parents and we made that human-to-human connection, and we're able to find solutions, and I think that's what's been so hurtful during this. You know, I removed over sixty books from our shelves, I cannot be speaking a single complaint about any of those books, and I don't have any theories of why the parents aren't following the policies that we have in place, to contact other librarians first.
Go, go, you, you go ahead, just slide the microphone down here, and then I have.
And I know you have a question, I was just going to, to answer your question, I did have a parent, a few years ago emailed me about a book, and, and I called her and talked to her on the phone, and we talked, I talked about how she could be able to help with all that, and reviews, and I'm going to make the kids comfortable, and how can I help them, so I just wanted to kind of piece up, it's really good as a starting point to have that wonderful conversation with parents.
And I have had one challenge in nineteen years, it was in two thousand twelve, and the parent came in and talked with me, and, and we, I gave him the form that's in our policy, took them out, and the next, and he wanted to pursue it to the next step, so we had a school committee, who went all the way to, right before the superintendent, if he had wanted to reveal it, but the group, the committee from the school decided to keep the book on as it was, and the committee at the district level also decided to, so we did not pursue it further, but the policy worked, and, and as I said. But the policy worked, and, um, and as I say, that's the one time in nineteen years I had a challenge.
Are there any of them?
Well, I was just gonna say that, um, in addition to engaging with that parent, I, I've not had this experience, you know, as a librarian, but, um, like, I'm gonna read that book and figure out whether, like, what we are dealing with. Perhaps it's a book I've already read, so I can speak to it, but, but, but again, we don't want things on the shelves, they shouldn't be on the shelves, and, um, I, like, that really is important, and, um, that's just, yeah, that's a piece of opportunity.
Yeah, tell me about your reading or your removal process, how do you determine, uh, maybe sometimes there, you come across a book and you're like, whoa, maybe you're not, I don't know. Um, tell me about your reading process when, when you're, can't keep all books, you gotta make room for new books, you have them in shelf space, um, maybe more shelf space than others. Um, but tell me how your, what is your decision process when you're removing a book? Um, even, you can talk about just in general, because certainly there are titles on your shelves that have never been picked up, um, and then, and then others that, um, would maybe cross the line for sexually explicit content, and tell me how you determine when you're gonna leave those things out, either word.
So I think that reading is just as important as curating your catalog, to curating your catalog as purchasing books. We look at a variety of statistics, whether it's the condition of the book, the age, if it's, um, presenting any disinformation, um, if it's circulating, if it's something we've determined no longer fits our selection policy, so there are so many things that we're looking at when we go through the reading process. I frequently walk around the library and say, oh, that series isn't circulating anymore. I either need to promote it or get rid of it. And it, it's a constant process that we're not looking at books specifically for sexual, sexually explicit content when we're reading books, because we're selecting books that don't have sexually explicit content. We are not specific, we're not... We would never choose to put a book in knowingly, knowing that it has something so explicit that we would need to take it off the shelves. We do make mistakes. And so if we did make a mistake and we realized that we put a book on the shelf that should not be on the shelf, we would use our reconsideration policy that begins measuring it against our selection policy to determine if it should be on the shelf.
Have you taken any time to look at the list of books that we removed? Take a couple of that and say, they're right up there. Are there any on that list that you're bound to add?
So I received the list and was told that they needed to be off my shelves immediately and that they would be collected immediately, so I removed them from my shelf, but in a box.
Ms. Tate? Do you look them up on the internet?
No, I'm not aware of how to read, um, books without checking them out from the library. I've not checked them out from a library.
So you don't have to check out any of the books that were on the list to say, just so that we can come to some kind of common ground and say, you know what, they're right, your art's on, you better, we should look at it.
I can only speak personally, I, um, some of the books on that list, um, I, I had read, um, some of the books on that list, I can think of one book, and I don't wanna give the specifics, but there was a book on that list that I had read, um, because a student had recommended it, and I, and we determined it wasn't a good fit for Turner, actually. Um, and the, the other books that have been, obviously not copies that were ours, but I've been working through reading them, the ones I had already read, um, just to, to try and be able to personally come to an understanding of whether or not they, you know, are a good fit or not for, for, for our library, you know, whether they're ones that I would advocate and come back or not. I, while, while that, you know, the generation on that list is, is, feels uncomfortable, like the reality of seeing, seeing that there are concerns about those books, is something I think, I, I know I, and I would say we have, you know, two concerns, and two, and a consideration.
Hi, I'm in Rockland High School, um, I was not feeling well, sorry, sorry, still, that's basically. Um, but I would say of those, I had had a copy of women again, not to throw that book and, but donated by a student who read it, and before I finished this, I loved it, maybe you'd share it. And I looked through it and thought, no, this isn't, this isn't for us, you know, I'll have it passed on elsewhere. Um, so yes, I have used our policies with those lists to determine that at least one of those titles was not the root for Rockland High School, as to my thinking.
We asked about reading earlier, if you take a look at those policies we put in front of you, we do all have a detailed process on reading. Also know that we, specifically at my library, and for most of us, reading here, I informed parents that they do, please, it's for me, and we, they would not like your child to have access to, we can make notes in children's files for Destiny, which is our library manager's software. And I have done that, and put notes in certain files about maybe titles or authors or content that a parent did not want their child to access. Again, this was not a formal complaint about any specific title, but just, you know, a list of certain authors or titles that they didn't want them to have, their child to have access to, not call for removal specifically for their child, and that system has worked so far that the parent has acknowledged that that is in fact working for their child. And so we do have the ability to do that. All parents were also given a tutorial or a video at the beginning of the year, and Dr. Shipley had talked about this, and we had talked about it with an opt-in policy where we can receive an email every time their child checks out items from the school library. To my knowledge, there's been three parents in Rockingham County who have opted into that system, but that is also available, so we wanted you to be aware and transparent, so we do have with parents to make sure that we are making sure we are listening to parents and we want to honor their concerns for their children.
Let's turn our attention to some of the proposed policies, not that we have to carve up everything out of these policies and make our, we can certainly start from scratch. Is there anything that you're wanting to see for sure that gets in these policies? What, what would you like us to make sure that we, what would you hope that is in this policy? And we're looking at kind of two different policies right now, one for, um, collection and one for challenges. So keeping that in mind, what are some things that you would want to see for sure, um, on either one? Um, I'd like everybody to have a chance to speak to this one, maybe, and maybe, and even if this is saying this like you're facing here, maybe anything from, you know, one of these policies, I saw, once a book challenged has gone to a committee and the decision is made, then that, that decision stands for all eternity, or, or stands for four years, and then it can be reconsidered, and it could go back on the shelf for it, it could be reconsidered to be pulled off the shelf again. Some, some of them have two-year policies, some of them have four, some of them just don't say. So that's like an example of something that you, you read it, you were like, ooh, like, I don't like that, or like, please make sure that, you know, that we have something like this, and then give me an example. Um, you can take turns, somebody's gonna share.
I have a question, um, in the interest of saving time in this process, why, um, well, would it be a good idea to use our current policy as a starting point and then possibly pull in characteristics or things that we're seeing in the other policies to enhance our current policy? Rather than starting, as you said, from scratch, seems like it would be a big time saver.
Yeah. I, great question. I think one of the, um, one of the policies that we like, because it's what we, I say we make change, Sarah likes to hand over county policy. Um, I like that policy for a lot of reasons, um, but there are parts of it that I don't like. Um, there were parts of, um, another collection policy that I felt like was, um, almost too comprehensive. There, I think I mentioned in the last meeting, there was one that talks about cataloging, like, uh, classroom libraries, and it had to go through all of that, and I, I think, um, that might be too far in one direction that we wanna go, so is there anything, um, I'm not sure, I, I looked at your policies, some, they look like you all develop them together, is that correct? Okay.
They're, they're all written using the A, A standard for selection policies.
Selective, okay, that's, because there's a lot of similarities here, um, but, you know, the one thing that it doesn't talk about is sexually explicit content, and that's kind of what we're looking at as, um, ever moving, anything that meets that definition. So does anybody outside of us, knowing that we're gonna, we're gonna write a policy, is there anything you want to make sure that we do have or that we do not?
Um, Ms., uh, of course, we do have policies in front of us that were written, uh, largely by my understanding, um, the, I'm sorry, I've forgotten the last name, uh, Lombauer? Uh, I, I believe he, he took a, he started the Turner, Ashley, went from scratch, tailored towards Rockingham County students, written by someone who attended Rockingham County schools, and knows our area quite well, is that, is there a statement? So I feel, yeah, I feel like that should be our starting point, if we wanna add, um, sexually explicit, explicit parameters, I feel like you all would be open to that, but I think that's where our starting point needs to be.
I, I appreciate that, I, I would say that I don't find the Hanover policies in particular to be super far from, from what you would find in, in mine, certainly. That they have the, the special committee that deals with, the, the full of sexually explicit, um... They've got a section that deals with that specifically that, that we would find in ours. But I think you'll find a lot of aspects of their, particularly the reconsideration policy, to be quite similar.
Oh, Mary.
My sustain, um, I wrote it, starting from a class that I follow is DLA. I do like the tiers where it starts at the school level, and then we can address it there either with the library or the principal, have a meeting with the parents, and then if we need to go up to the next level, where there could be another committee, a central office with key people, and then you're one. I like the tiers, I think we've talked about that too, we're fine with that, because a lot of times we can avoid the thin house.
Yeah. There were a couple of policies that didn't have a tier that started at the school, and I think that's really important, um, that, that, that the school will, yeah, be, be your first point of contact, and, and that's why there are tiers, if that doesn't satisfy, you know, there are tiers, but, but I think it's healthy for that back and forth for it to start there at the school.
The current school board policy, we have a place for instructional materials, and reconsidering those does have that tiered process, and speaking with, you know, my colleagues, we have said, we are willing to just, add, jump, add library materials into the existing policy that's in place for instructional materials, to just add supplementary, supplementary materials to include library materials with that tiered policy already in place.
We are a minute after, so Ms. First, do you wanna, have you have a more question?
Ms. Tate, do you have questions?
I, I would just say, because we're talking a lot about, um, I don't have huge complaints about these that, that you all have in place. I think where we can get to some common ground is if we understand where each of us is coming from. Um, what I'm hearing is, is that you all do a really good job of addressing at your level to each individual parent, right? Ms. Kettie, you're responsible for six hundred and a couple of students, right? And you do really well with communicating with those parents. Where we come from is that we're responsible for eleven thousand. So we're just, we're looking at the same problem, just from a different perspective, I think. So I don't know that we have huge problems with this, it's just that we didn't have a policy because we're specific, we're looking at sexually explicit content, violence, and drug use. Those are the things that we want in, and I guess when we're talking about, is there any, if you definitely don't want a policy, we'll talk about school board policy, not these, or that you definitely want in, do, I mean, are we even at the same table when we say we should not have this detailed explicit content that multiple, um, studies have said it's really bad with the developing party? Like, can we at least come to that part of the table and say, maybe that stuff should be there? Because I, I wanna keep that in our normal writing policy.
Um, I think that we have to be very careful in the words we use and choose. When we characterize things as pornography, um, that's a very inflammatory word, and, um, sometimes materials in a library or even instructional materials, which we have abided by the state law to meet the parameters of that, um, may have those things in them. And oftentimes, um, I think the last atlas was on the list. That was in the classroom library that I walked into in nineteen eighty-four. It is a cautionary tale if you read the whole book. And when you take things out of context and take them out of the representation of the characters, you change the meaning of the work as a whole, which we always consider. And I'm not trying to slide by, as my colleagues have said, and these are my colleagues. Um, I do not want us to have division-wide policies that take away the value of relationships in Rockingham County public schools, and also to diminish opportunities for very intelligent students who are able to have very mature conversations.
You answered that, you answered that, to take away your relationship, go back to that, explain that.
Because when we say, as a supervi-, I've never had a supervisor in this division that if there was a concern, that supervisor didn't say, you need to talk to Ms. Tate first. And that is why I'm above the school division and the people I work with, because that relationship is number one in Rockingham County, that is what we are. And when we lay broad policies that diminish the relationship because we don't think of what the personal circumstance is or respect the relationship that the people within our schools have with their school communities, this is very concerning to me, it's heartbreaking. Because I think sometimes people try to make an issue of things that I feel are not really an issue. And if it is a sincere issue, then we want conversations that establish relationships with all of our stakeholders. And I think it is misleading to say that that is not true. Um, I think that if there are sexually explicit things in books, that it depends on the audience and the circumstance with which in that, which, within which that is addressed. And I have taught thousands of students who have very mature and intelligent conversations about that material.
Are there any, before we wrap it up, are there any librarians in high school that would like to say anything else we have, like, about it?
I haven't really prepared what I was going to say, but what concerns me with children. And I've, I've been in the high school for 27 years and I'm 49 years old. So I've been a public educator a long time. I don't see students checking out books. I just don't. I do see them on their cell phones all day, every day. And that is where my concern is, is that students are not checking out these books. They're not reading these books. And they're attached to their phones and they can see a lot of, of stuff on their phones. And, and that's, that's where my concern is.
Alone this once, I love that, uh, concern that I've had more in the past two years than up in the Rock River. Should have done the math, 18, 19 years, just under 15. I, I mentioned some of my colleagues recently. Most requests for books I get are middle grade books, are baby kids. And I'm so glad that they have a safe comfort to read. And, and I guess I need to add also, I have, so just personally, I have a 19-year-old, 17-year-old, 14-year-old, and a 10, 10-year-old. Not good with numbers. And my 14-year-old, her birthday is September 30th. And she started high school at 13, for the first time in high school. She's as young as she can be in the state of Virginia, a freshman in high school. And I have always worn that in mind, like, I will have the baby. And she is currently the baby of a high school. I always want everything to be something I get out of conversation with her about. Everything that I've ever had my hands on in Broadway, I guess, whatever, has been, that I have been comfortable with her looking at. That's my basis. But I welcome her to, and I, I, I don't know how to do this other than an anecdote. She has come to me three times this year with her phone, concerned about something of her own social media. She has never brought a book to bed, you know, and been frightened of that. Because she knows she can close it and walk away. And that is a safe place where she can learn how she, where her morals bring her to, and her life, bring her to where she can draw her line with what's appropriate for her life. What she feels is ethical and moral and in line with her church faith, you know, she's, she's a strong young woman. And I just, I am loathe to remove a safe place for students to learn how they're going to react because they are going to encounter these hard situations. And in fact, I keep, and I just talk way too much, we're going to have a small, a minute. But there's a student at Broadway last week who came to me, I work intimately with the, our, our food bank there, needing some razors. He had no razors, he had no way to buy them, had no money. And we don't give out razors, you know, we have them for our family nights, but parents come once a month. So I thought about it and I was like, I'm not giving this other school to the student. I said, if you can come back, you know, after school, you were a trust for the 18-year-old, this is the senior. And afterwards, I, you know, I gave him a bag, fully wrapped up. Said, if you take this home, straight home, you don't ride a bus, you know, just, even though they're saying razors, I am nervous about this. And afterward, that's right, my administrator said, I, just so you know, I did this, you know, they may be nervous, but I did it because I just felt this was right, making this student. And they said, I'm so glad you did that. You know how mom and dad are in prison for making that, this was grandma, well, grandma went to prison last week for making that. Like, our kids' real life needs to be reflected in a way they can, no, they overcome. Like, the, the drugs are not only in the books, they, they're in their homes. And so that one in particular, the drugs really make me nervous. Like, I really want them to see, and Ellen Hopkins is a cautionary tale, that, you know, like, to get out. This is not romanticizing, this is, yeah, this, this is some kid's real life in Broadway. And I want them to see they can make it through an official setting. There's such good kids and they deserve the best. Sorry, I left them. Thank you for listening.
I want to thank you all for your time. We run right up until 10 o'clock and I'd like to switch over to, um, to librarians to have a chance to have a conversation. But do you feel afraid to reach out, you know, um, we're going to take a five-minute break and then transition. Do you feel afraid to reach out to the email if there's things you felt that you need to share? If that's, um, if that's anything you can share, you know, or you can call, you can call.
My husband's still at school.
I haven't noticed, but I actually haven't tested Board Docs.
I have a thousand jobs open and have it shut down on my computer a lot. So maybe it's just me, correction system, maybe I'll be able to.
I can, I can check out Board Docs. I'll, I'll take a look.
Was it Board Docs last night?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, Board Docs was down.
So it could be Board Docs again.
It could be. How about you on the back end of Board Docs, is things looking okay? I know, I can hear you. It's okay? Hey Jackie? Board Docs looks okay. Try a good old reboot.
Okay. Sarah, do you want me to donate mine so they can be on either sides? Yeah.
I'm out, so I need to talk elders.
Yeah, I know. I can get a whole playground of kids to.
The microphones are going to open, you know, here we go. Okay, um, why don't you go around and introduce yourselves, tell us your library, who you are representing here today?
I can start. So, my name is Stephanie May, I am a building student on a true school. This is my 19th year in education. I taught fourth and first grade and then I moved into the library. And this is my ninth year in the library.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Lawyer and I am at Elton Elementary School. This is my eight years as a librarian and I've been working for the county since 2010.
Hi, my name is Corinne Vance and I'm a librarian at Basis for Elementary. I pretty much have my whole career there, 24 years, first grade, second grade teacher and librarian for the last 15 years. And I feel like I really know my community. I see the bases when I drive by their houses to school, whenever I arrive, I see them in the motel rooms when I go by Route 11. So I know where my community lives and the backgrounds they have.
I'm Jessica Brubaker, I have 13 years now teaching. I've been a classroom teacher, pre-k, kindergarten, second, fifth. This is my sixth year in the library and I live two minutes from school, so I live in the back community and I have kids.
Which school?
Our back.
My Amy Centers. I'm a librarian at Johnson Myers, Mountain Broadway. I've been a librarian there for eight years. I taught marketing and accounting for 20 years. I live at Broadway, so I live two minutes away, both my daughters graduated from Broadway. Amy Centers.
Hi, my name is Night and I'm a librarian at Folchran. I've been there for, this is my 27th year at Folchran. And I absolutely love it, I've been in the library for, I think this is my ninth year. I taught pre-k, second and fourth before that, but I just love my little school community and blessed to be in the library.
My name is Dana Roderick, I'm a librarian at Coverland Elementary School. This is my 24th year teaching and I've taught in classroom and first grade and third grade. I was a reading specialist for eight years. And I've spent the last five years in the library in a larger school, in a larger elementary school in the county. Not only am I a teacher in the county, I am also a parent. I have two spots for high school students. I have a junior who is driving her AP English, reading lots of great books. I also am on to a freshman son who spends more time reading scripts and novels. He grabs on the stage, so I'm in love with theater boosters, there are spots at the school where I can teach.
Hi, I'm Courtney, I've been a librarian at the P. elementary. I've been a librarian for 14 years, pretty much since I started teaching. This is my first year here in Rock River County, I'm very excited to be here. I have heard so many amazing things and I've been experiencing so many amazing things since I've been here.
Good morning, my name is Tricia Haskin, I'm a librarian at John Weyland Elementary. Most people are here, I have not made it to Virginia. This is my second year here in Virginia. I've been teaching for 28 years, this is my first year in the library.
Hi, my name is Marco Jancy. And I remember back when I was newlywed, Larry Hoffman hired me to be a third grade teacher at Plains Elementary, one of the still open classrooms. And I, this week, have celebrated 61 years of life. And I have a deep sense of gratitude that I have dedicated my life to Rocky County schools. And the students have failed me through teaching in the classroom, being a reading specialist, gifted education, and now a librarian at Pleasant Valley. And I just want to say every morning, as I drive to Pleasant Valley, I have this sense of purpose and meaning. And I want to just say thank you for that opportunity.
So I am old librarian, I've been doing it for over 20 years. I actually was born across seas and that's where I've been now. So I've raised some children, I've been rocking my school for many, many years. I've worked with some of these people, with some of our kiddos. I love library, it's not just about the books. I know that's the conversation we're having today, and I appreciate that conversation. But the library is so much, if you ever want to come visit, just come to Riverman Elementary. It's kind of the optimal way, I welcome you.
My name's Lisa Schifferz and I have one daughter who's not going to school yet. Although we're just three residents, she'll probably be invited because this is my seventh year at Mountain View as a librarian. Although we're just three residents, she'll probably be in there because of my seventh year at Mountain View as a librarian.
Hi, I'm Nora Parker. I've been a librarian for nineteen years, second semester, teaching in the county since nineteen ninety-two. I taught fourth grade, second grade. One of my three jobs at Jamie was to work preschool and I have four grandchildren who went through the county schools. I'm at South River for my thirty-second year. Because I wanted to go back to a small school, I started at the Dackiesville. And I wondered what it would be like to be a librarian for less than five hundred kids. And have a really soft spot for the kids who need lots of love.
Hi, I'm Karen Sargent. This is my sixth year at Plains Elementary School. My third year as the librarian there. About fifteen years experience in different settings and education, including special education and kindergarten resistance. And I absolutely love being there. My daughter is a Plains. She loves being there, I love being a library teacher. So it's been a pleasure.
I think when we're talking about elementary versus secondary, there are some major differences. Tell me a little bit, you're serving a wide range of students and that is a challenge, right? So high school serves a broad range, middle school serves a broad range. But you all are serving, you know, pre-k through, you're serving eighty days who have parents reading these books to the elderly. All the way up until we have ten, you know, ten and eleven year olds as they approach middle school. You all are also trying to collect, just like other librarians in middle school, right? You have like a wide range of, you've got kids who can, who are ten and eleven years old, but they are reading on a first grade level. And they want to look like they're carrying big chapter books around, but they can't read them. And so you all have some unique challenges in meeting the needs of like a very broad range. You've got, you know, nine-year-olds that can read on a high school level, for sure. But that doesn't mean we're putting high school level material in our libraries. So can you share some of how you develop that collection at the elementary level? I don't know that there's anything that we're aware of, especially just wasn't content, anything that would fall under that category at the elementary level? And there's a reason for that, right? So if you could share just a little bit about how you're developing, could be anything broad, something you want us to know, like, hey, you've got to find a lot of high interest, low vocab kind of books of what that even means. You could share pictures, anything that wants to, on those topics a lot of times.
Before we answer questions, could we afford a moment, just to give you a minute of what our, our day looks like as an elementary librarian? Just under transparency of your own heart.
Yeah, sure. I think that's great. I also like, someone mentioned, this out here, maybe, you all do a whole lot of work and just have libraries. These are, you know, you're teaching classes, you're bringing in students, you're doing a whole lot of other things at the elementary level, social and good.
Thank you. Today I'd like to speak on the aspect of transparency and parent inclusion. And I would like to start with a quote from a book that I know you all know well. It was recently removed from our shelves and it's The Invisible Boy That Trudy Lovewicke. And the author describes the main character, Leslie. He sits there wondering, what is worse, being left out or being invisible? Throughout this process, our profession has been looked left out through the culture wars, common use of course, derogatory terms, unfitting for anyone in this room, and made to feel invisible through the lack of inclusion within the conversation. To the latter part, thank you for today, including us in these important, very important conversations. Now, as it translates or relates to transparency and parent involvement, it has always been deemed critical that our policies for book curation be open and understood by the community. Librarians want books to be for their patrons and these curations are not a reflection of their own values, perspectives, culture, religion, ethnicity, or personal identity. We are not fulfilling our jobs if the books only reflect our own lens we provide for all. While it has been stated repeatedly that there is no existing policy for library book selection, it has largely been overlooked that each RCPF librarian is responsible for developing a specific book selection policy that is then posted on their school's individual website. Each librarian's catalog of books available to students is also made available via their school's website. This allows parents to have an opportunity to review and express any concerns that they may have at any given time. Division Y librarians create videos explaining how students can place particular books on hold. Some librarians went as far as to teach parents how to create to-be-read lists with their students so they knew what they were coming to check out when they visited the library. Parents have the ability to request permission for their child to read or not read certain books or certain book topics. We have a flagging function in our circulation system to help with this. While there's not a formal request form available at this point, we are open to and welcome this type of documentation. Parents even have the ability, and I think Ms. Kidd has spoken on this earlier, to receive emails notifying them of every book their child has checked out. Note that presently, there are only three parents in the county that have made this specific request. The board has maintained a pledge to be the transparent board, one that notifies their constituents and presumably staff members of topics and considerations before actions are made. As it relates to library catalogs, we request that our transparency, transparency, excuse me, includes open dialogue with your professional staff, full disclosure of any book challenge received from the community, and adherence to proper book reconsideration protocol prior to blanket removal from our shelves. Without, we risk the lessons from books such as The Invisible Boy remaining visible to us all. Thank you. Is there any other question or do we have an answer?
Can you share how, thank you for that. Can you share how you carry your libraries, vary interests? Some schools are very different than others as far as what, if we're talking community schools, right? So elementary schools, I feel like, can have a lot of differences where as much kids know in high school, you start meshing all of those groups of kids together, it becomes more broad.
So I have like elementary. So I, I was, I, because I've been a librarian for a long time, I walked into Mendelita to an older collection and had to do a lot of reading. Things were just outdated. And then I got to start Riverbend's collection from scratch and that was amazing. When it comes to what I select, I really just look for what is going to grab a kid's attention. What series are they reading? What visit that they're interested in? Dinosaurs and the girls love the middle school drawn on types of graphic novels and that sort of thing. So, you know, it's just, what are they going to read? And we talked about reading earlier. I read like crazy. Because if it's a book that hasn't been checked out, I need space for the stuff that's going to be checked out. And if it's a book that just isn't appropriate for the same age, which I'm now more in my older collection, I'm reading them. Because they're just the ones you just get rid of. And, you know, I read all the time. And sometimes there's a little bit of guilt there because you're getting rid of a lot of books that cost a ton of money and we have a limited budget. But I really just look for what our kids will want to read and then we look at reviews. And so those are my main focuses for collection development.
I think we also, right now, have a suggestion box that our kids can actually literally look at and titles or suggestions. Because I was writing a library theater, you know, the job, but that's a little occasion. I don't know them very well yet. I've been spending the first semester, beginning to know them, having conversations, really paying attention to what, like, I can go through the catalog, through our palette and actually like run statistics. But having a conversation with the students is so much more important, getting more information from them, building those relationships with them, really helps you know what are they interested in. My last school, they loved hunting books. Well, I don't have any here and some of the kids don't like hunting, but they're not interested in reading about it here. So that's, you know, the kind of things, those conversations are what we all have all the time with our students to see what we need to be spending money on.
There are schools that are like that. Your, your collection policy is like, or it's not policy, but just what your students are. The things your students are interested in and how they're automating themselves from are very different than what might be at, if you were to sell.
I just want to add to that by knowing my community, how I pick books. One thing we've become passionate about is school garden. And so I started out my involvement, put more books in the library about gardening. Picture books, jacket books, non-creational books that kids could check out because they are excited. And that's led to me taking over the school garden and helping to develop that and teaching lessons in the library for making pizza in the library in case of that. So my collection reflects what we're interested in. It also reflects what the students are interested in. I had the first in a series about a girl in Egypt, China, or Egypt. And I have a new reader who was added about Egypt, Egypt. They were learning about their grade in the classroom and she's like, do you have more? And this is right before Christmas break. And I said, I don't. And if I go through the process of having to put a purchase order and buy it, it's going to be a month down the line. So I bought it myself, looking at it, if I'm appropriate, and bought the rest of the series and sent it home with her over Christmas. And she read the entire series. I think in elementary especially, we make choices like that all the time. Because we want to book books in the kids' hands that are interesting, that are appropriate, and that we know we're going to encourage their reading. I think all of us, every year, I spend probably a thousand dollars of my own money because I don't have enough pocket and family money. I've had years where I've spent six thousand dollars, two thousand dollars has been rocking the community money. I fundraised the rest of the brothers to read the grants, donors choose, book fairs, just to get the books that we need. I have two thousand dollars worth of books that were damaged from close to water in book bags or have been lost. That's on waiting list if you purchase to add it back to my library, titles that I've been in before. I have over a thousand dollars of books I would like to add that are excellent books, but I don't have the money to do that. When I started in two thousand and eight, my budget at Basis for Elementary for about three hundred and fifty kids was five thousand dollars. The recession hit and they dropped it to two thousand dollars. We have two hundred and thirty. Next year, we're going back up to over three hundred students. And I still have to fundraise and find ways to provide the books for the kids to find. I have books, we are not very diverse school, we're going to get more diverse, but whenever somebody moves in from a different culture, I find a quote about that culture. Not necessarily because they do, they came from, but because the rest of the population needs to know about that culture. So that's how I create that. It's not only the same for East Rock or Folchran. That's why we can't have the same exact books in every library, but they're needs by population. Sorry. I'm going to repeat that, which caused a sore throat, a kindergarten chair, which means I'm wasting the best.
So that brings me to a question. Is the funding the same for elementary as it is for the state? Is the funding for elementary the same as in just for high school? I've got. Based on population. So it's all based on population? So we spend, what was it, seven dollars per student? Exactly. Is it roughly? Between seven and eight, seven to eight books? Seven to eight dollars per student? Seven to eight dollars to per pupil per year? Whether they're an elementary school student or a high school student? Okay. Thank you for that.
I was just going to follow, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let's say one thing that should go off, but feel like your contribution is kind of a thing about half of my library this year. Adding more books into the library, library, different languages. So kids can take this home, maybe read this with their families. So even if they're learning English, their parents don't always. So I've had a couple things that were exciting to read. It's not really, because they're like, that's what my mom reads. And so they can come home and they can share those books with people.
You don't do those reals, do you?
No, not the real.
Oh, that's so common. But another couple of questions. How much does an elementary, average elementary book cost? Because, I mean, they are not the five dollar Amazon book, right?
So it depends on your shopping locally. A lot of us fill our libraries with books from Green Alley Book Fair, which could range from a dollar to five dollars. Then you also need to take into consideration the processing materials you need to cover those books with, to make them withhold the amount of reads that they'll, they'll gain. I was going to speak off just briefly with Carleen. My bookkeeper, when I first got my budget and I cover and we have about five thousand dollars, she cautioned me to set aside about five hundred dollars to my budget for lost and damaged books because of the population of students we serve. I do not charge the review funds, I do not charge for replacements, I do not charge for damaged books, I eat that. And so again, I have that five hundred dollar buffer, but what I've found is it's not enough. And, oh, I forgot what I was going to say. Someone else speak, if that's a better call. Oh, sorry. Yes, if we're. Twenty-five dollars is your average library bound book. And that is found in such a way that it allows multiple reads compared to a bookie my back from Green Alley Book Fair or Rockland County Fair. They're not made for multiple reads.
So your average book cost is basically the budget for three students per.
And then you asked earlier what, what our collection affords of students. At Coverland, we have almost eight hundred students. And so when running a report, that's about an average of twenty-three books per student in our school, on the shelves.
This is a great conversation to have. We appreciate these questions. Is that, you said twenty-three books per student? Is that pretty much what you all need to have on county land? Run out? Yeah, we would have to go to Destiny and run reports. That's not something we, we're about to say, but we would like one of the PDS. I was just curious because that was a big difference on the secondary schools. Actually, you know better about the elementary.
I'm wondering if the secondary might put more of their budget into online sources? Because I don't, when I used to teach middle school, because after I did nine years in the middle school, a lot of, we have a lot of online sources, you say now? Okay. So I think maybe just their books are more expensive.
As a middle school teacher, you have to keep in mind they're reading longer books. It takes them longer to read them. Because in elementary school, they can sit down and read a picture book in ten minutes.
That's true.
Elementary kids need a much bigger volume of books in order to keep them in books.
We have a lot of like paperbacks that aren't really cheap. So, I mean, we could easily have thirty to thirty books per student in ours right now, right now. Because we have a ton of really cheap paperbacks and we have a book fair that are going to be, I know I'm a little torn, but we can get burned out for places in the next couple of years.
And you do this conversation. At Pleasant Valley, we have about twenty-one books per student. And we have a highly diverse population. And when the immigrants are coming, I run to find more Ukrainian books. Green Alley Book Fair has helped me. Barnes and Noble has helped me find those books. But it's been a difficult journey to find what we need for our newcomers. And to add on to that, there was one policy, I think maybe it was Shado County, that only afforded their librarians to shop twice a year. And so as elementary librarians who are catering to our students who are coming in, coming out, or their interests are changing from first grade to second to third, we're shopping constantly. So to look at narrowing our buying powers to two times a year will be a disservice to our students. Well, the kids get just as excited. Like, I know that we get right at two thousand and all of that. And the kids get just as excited when they see that Fall of that Box arrive. Like, it is a fight to like, let me get them in the computer first. You know, and there are some books, we're picking books for kids, like, I would literally put it in the computer and take it to class and be like, it just got here. Do you want this to be the first checkout? And it gets the correct thing. Like, and it just makes us all, teacher, hard time.
He probably loved it.
That's what I was going to say. We have a drawing, like, whenever we get new books, like the new annual that just came, like, we have to have a drawing to see if he'll be the first person to check it out. Because otherwise, they would go to that first class they came in and nobody else would see it, which is like, I'm classing. And they do, like, I agree with, like, buying books twice a year would be a huge disservice.
Okay, Sarah, that was a question. I'm sorry I struggled with this.
That was a quick question that I have. I didn't really get to touch on middle school. So you guys, you do that multiple times a year. It's not like the one we got in this, is that throughout the year of middle school as well? So.
I play six or play once.
And just a dress that she brought up, the annual, which we've been waiting for how many, six years? She was offered the right to ask in the series. I sent out email, it really does. I sent out email, it really does exist to the other librarians. I took it home to read before I put it in and I got an email Friday from Dr. Oliver saying, no more books added to the library. So it's steady, I told the kids it was steady, I cannot put it out. My kids are thinking, reading my third school series in their classroom, we did a book club with reading teachers, I ordered her books, they just came in on Friday, I cannot put those out for them. I had a girl ask for the first in the series that got lost, I cannot put that out yet to her, because we've had this whole problem with these books, that's how much, I have about forty more books coming that I've ordered that this week they cannot, I cannot put them out, make them accessible. So it really can't resist one where could give them limits like that. We've already made the decision that they're appropriate, but why do we have to wait so long?
Speaking of that as well, we all fundraise, or most of us hopefully fundraise through Celestic Book Fairs. And so that money is handled a little bit differently through our bookkeeper and I don't know, I don't understand for all, but at our school, it's much easier to spend quickly, so we can put it in a list on wish list, the bookkeeper has those books to study in the week. On the same line, those Celestic dollars that you earn from your sales and profits, we're able to just order through Celestic website. We have an upcoming book fair in three weeks. My demographic of students, they all can't shop and so we always find a way that every student gets something. Usually it's through a book fair coupon, then I give teachers free coupons at that so they please watch you shop. Those who haven't passed itself, then they have to know to come shop. This go around, I've spent, I think, five hundred dollars of my Celestic profit to give away books at the start of the book fair, so that again, every student has a book from the book fair. Those books arrived this week and my concern is because they arrived at the same time that the whole place, and I don't know if to pass these books out or not, they've not been reviewed many, but if not in a large percent of our population, we'll not have a book for a book.
Can you share about how do you determine what's appropriate for ten year olds, book as in libraries for ten year olds, eleven year olds?
I have to say, I don't have as much difficulty as a middle school and high school, but I did have some of those very girls who said, Mrs. Pudge, where's the romance section? I said, we do not have one in elementary school, so you do have to make those decisions. We do have, our vendors have excellent resources with the reviews of different books. So if it's a new book to us, we will read the reviews and then judge based on that. And they also know that some coordinators, probably the first ones are, they want to say grade five and up. And I occasionally have a parent here and he'll say, hey, I don't like for my child to check out books, magic, it was a dream, it's one of them. So we just put a note on their account, you know, please do not let them. But then we also ask them here to have a conversation with your student, you know, these are, our coordinators as a family, we would like you to respect that. And it has worked really well. But yeah, choosing for a fifth grader is difficult sometimes.
Thinking back, you know, with the upper grades, it said, you know, we use what the professional resources, the reviews that said, personally, I tend to, if it says grade four through eight, I really tend to consider it, is it something we already have in the library, the series is already there, is it something that we really need to have, like, is it a topic we don't already have? You know, because fifth graders, it's a different age group and, you know, is it a topic that... We also have like a section in our library that, you know, we'll put on in grades four and five only. And we have a lot of students in and out of that, it'll say, for the parent, they can check out whatever they want, other people will say, not allowed to get, you know, certain things. A lot of us, when we have these discussions, that, you know, absolutely happy to put in a note that says, students cannot check out certain things. But we do absolutely read the professional journals and the professional reviews on 封面, important book, and the library journals and absolutely all that into account. If there's an excerpt from the book on wherever we're looking at, I totally read that, especially when it says four number, grade four, grade four number, grade five number. If this is grade six number, I tend to not unless it's something we already have in the library and then I will look at it a little harder. But, because I have taught, like, in the middle school before, so I know that, and I dealt with books being questioned when I was in the middle school. So I know, and getting to know your demographic more, like, do these kids really, you know, is this a group of students and their families that would be, have objections to that, or is this a group of families in this school who would be open to that? Because I've also taught in schools that were very progressive and very open to different topics. So like, when I taught in this private school, we come, you know, they actually were asking for things for their fifth graders that I was like, oh, well, for a middle school book, if you want, sure, we'll put it in our library. So it's, you really do have to get to know your demographic and that is something, you know, that we all spend a lot of time doing, but we also spend a lot of time reading reviews. I was gonna say too, once we know our community, we have some parents that will go to and ask to books for us to get their input as well. I know my library assistant, she reads all the time. There was a book that I purchased, I had not read it, she did it and brought caution to me at that point. I passed the book up to the middle school, you know, so we do have checks and balances in those regards.
I was, I know that somebody mentioned it in the middle school conversation, that these books and these kids are not in the back when they come to our library. Like, I almost have the problem of our fifth graders, especially this part of the year, I know we all do, where they'll say, where are your scary books? And I'll say, well, these are the elementary school scary books. And they're like, no, 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 no. And they, the things that they are watching are much scarier than anything that any of us have in our libraries. And so I would say, if anything, we are way caught more cautious than, not all of them, but a lot of them are exposed to so many things when they are not reading a book or nothing. So it does get hard to find that balance of what would be interesting to them, but yet we're still elementary school appropriate, because their threshold is so much higher than what I would want to see.
The scary books are part of why I get those feedback from parents or grandparents about what they want and don't. I have some blocks on some, I had a grandparent in on our book month the other night and was talking about this and I said, oh, remember you talked to me last year about your kids are afraid to go upstairs when they see something scary and they don't want to see the bed? I pulled her over to the computer, like, this is where I put the block in for your kids, not to check out those books. I try to be sensitive. Under third grade, I try to really be sensitive and I say, you know, you're glad, you're welcome to have this, I mean, just mom or dad, if they like this type of, I'd be glad to give to, they can look it up in my school library catalog. So I always tell, I don't want to say no, because I've had, as a first and second grade teacher, I've had those kids who read in sixth and seventh grade level, I've had those kids whose parents have been reading them Goosebumps since kindergarten, who have come in and talked about Chucky movies, giving me thrills. I like those books myself that much, so I have that, what am I gonna call them? Kind of a, well, a filter kind of one. So I try to make things available to everybody, but I want to try to find a way to accommodate everybody without stifling their choice.
So I, my, I think it was my second year as librarian, I did have a book that was challenged and we went through the process with that. And anyway, it was one of the books that was on the list that were pulled. And so as I was thinking about that book, I was just like, I knew I had read it at the time that it was challenged, just to see, you know, I needed to read it, so I did. And as part of the challenge process, I wasn't on the committee, but I did have to write a response, I guess, about it. And so I looked that up the other day and came across it and I feel like it's something that I would like you all to hear, about looking at a book in the whole context of the book and not just kind of a little piece. So if I could share that with you all, it was part of it. So the book was drawn, that the complaint was for, and I had written, while I didn't purchase this particular book for the library, given what I had seen on permabound, a company that I order from often, I would have ordered the book. It's by an author that the kids absolutely love, all of her books are hits with the kids, and I have, and I would have expected this one to be as well. Permabound suggests the book for grades four to nine and it has good reviews. With those things in mind, I probably would have selected it for our library too. Part of the library's goal is to service all students. With a population of pre-K through fifth grade students, it needs to have books that appeal to all students' reading taste and keeps all students engaged in reading. Parents should be reviewing what their children are reading to make sure it aligns with what they deem appropriate for their child. Students are always told that if they have chosen a book that either makes them feel uncomfortable and/or they do not make their parents what approve of, then please return it. While this book does portray characters who say they are gay and/or are realizing that they're gay, it is not the main plot of the story, nor does any explicit sexual behavior take place. The characters in the book are experiencing puppy love precious. While some parents and students may feel uncomfortable with the topic of homosexuality being brought up in the book, other parents and students may find it a mirror of their life and the world that is going on around them and thankful to see characters in a book going through some of the things that they are going through and/or people they know have gone through. Everyone needs to be able to find books they can see themselves for the people in the world depicted in. It is not the library's place to cut off one group of people because another group of people does not like or agree with it. This book creates a springboard for conversations about a topic that may be going on in a family and/or the world around them. This book shows that even though someone may be different, everyone can still be friends and not dwell on our differences. The author has portrayed that there is more to these characters' lives than being gay, just as there is more to Callie's life, that was another character in the book, just as there is more to Callie's life than just being straight. If a book enables a child to have a conversation with their parent and ask questions, then the book is doing exactly what it was meant to do. In the media complaint, the parents felt that the author was trying to sneak the content into the book. Rather, I believe she was trying to make the issue not seem like a big deal and just part of normal life. When the character said he was gay and the other one was talking about whether he was or not, there was not a big show about it. It was said and then the characters went on about their lives. Had the author put a warning on the back of the book, that would go against the point and make it seem like being gay is a part of someone, like, being gay is a part of someone's life that people should be warned about. I would say this is exactly what she is trying to refrain kids from feeling about themselves and/or their family members. This book is loved by a lot of students. It does not stay on the shelf and it has kids engaging in authentic reading. In my opinion, that is the reason enough to keep it on the shelf for those who choose to read it. So that was just for that book.
I think that was a great response, thank you for sharing that, your response there and what you said. I would have gone right there too, because we have, and I am a pastor and I do follow Christian values and as it said, that I don't want any type of books in our schools that have homosexuality in. That's false. That, well, your response there, right on. We have, we have plethora of students within our public schools that are dealing with all kinds of different issues and come from different backgrounds and all kinds of things, right? I think where we're looking at as board is when it's sexually explicit when it comes to, and I, you said, I want this book here, then we said that there is no sexual content in the book. We're just talking about kids that are either dealing with homosexuality or are homosexuals and that is the content of the book. We're looking at actually sexually explicit material in the books. Not that we want to keep out, and this is a lie that so many people, not so many people, but this is a lie that I think, or one of the mayor is saying that we don't want any homosexual or LGBTQ books at all. The problem is that the authors, whether you're heterosexual or you're LGBTQ, you still have to have a community standard. And I heard that come up here earlier, or was appropriate, I think, was came up earlier. So appropriateness within the books and our community standard is what we're looking for. So that, I just wanted to go on right there, that was a great response back to that parent thinking of saying that. And I just wanted to go on right there, that I agree with that as well.
And I think that's a good point. And so that brings me, why did she pull some A books before you realized this? Why were there invisible kid and all these, before they were fully vetted and you found out that there was no sexual explicitly in it? So why did we do that ahead of time?
I saw someone say something about that these books could possibly be off the shelves for a year and I think that's crazy and I advocated from the very beginning for this to be a quick process, although we were told that it didn't have to be a quick process, you know, with the time. So we had fifty-seven books to look at.
Why didn't you pull them off before you looked at them?
Right, so there's a lot there, so while you, I want to answer that. Were you talking about the book Drama? Um, let's say there were two books on this list, maybe Drama, maybe The Invisible Boy, right? Where we got parent complaints, okay? So is it the school board's job, if we were just formed by a regular policy that was already established, is it a school board's job to say, well, before I consider your complaint, I'm gonna go over it myself and see if it's worthy of you being able to act about a complaint? So if there's two on this list of fifty-seven, I'll grant you that, there's two that we might put back on the shelves, there may be four, but does it take away from the other fifty-five? Does that invalidate? Because, and I really, I really need to do this because you're elementary school, but this is what we're looking at. In fact, I didn't get a question from the middle one, I'm sure everyone's asked if they didn't. But when we look at books that are saying stuff like, I'm gonna take your pants off now, he moves his lips down Henry's chest, he feels under his mouth the beat, Henry's heart skips, and the realization of what Henry did. He kisses Henry, Henry solo flexes his stomach, his stretchy skin before his wife wastes him. I've never done this before, I just need you to tell me if I'm awful. Alex rolls his eyes and says, for fuck's sake, man, you just had my dick hanging around. You can at least kiss me tonight. So, so the answer is, we didn't get a chance to personally read fifty-seven parent complaints, but because we saw in bulk, we thought, we better deal with this. So we're not gonna validate fifty-five other books that has this kind of content, you know, because it's dangerous to the minds of children and I'll never back down from that. So that's why, when we have an active shooter situation in the school, what law enforcement does as a first, they neutralize the threat. That's, they don't know anything, we don't change with it, right? They neutralize the threat possible. I believe this is a threat to developing minds, so we neutralize the threat. That's why we didn't spend a year reading all of these books.
First of all, did you read the entire book? Cocaine poisoning?
We're not gonna get, we're not gonna get back to the board.
I think it's important, because we're talking about this, so if it's gonna happen, I'll say this.
Have you read a book in your library?
I have not, but I hope that.
Okay, but the answer is no. And so, but you're, you're expecting a bit of an expectation on us that we should read all these books that are on your board meeting. And so my thing is, have you read a book that's on your library? No, you read, you go, you find out what's, on some of these websites or what we said earlier that we used, that the county uses, hideaway. So you go and look at that, same thing we did when we went and we looked at some of the content in this book and we said, yeah, that deserves to be on that. But as she is, is capable of saying, there's parent's claims came in and that's why we did it.
And generally, you have twenty-four librarians that can help you with this, who have read a lot of these books and can help you evaluate, you have, I don't know how many English teachers that can help you with this, that have dealt with this, it's not all on you. You've got a lot of help here. And like, I think many have said, there's some that they would pull. I found The Outsiders on my shelf after one of us did a meeting. That isn't appropriate for elementary, so they're my previous librarian, I pulled that. So you have help, it's not for you to read all of those books, but before you do it, you make lists that you'll have first publicly, where other people may not pick up these lists and start banning the books just because Rocky and Kelly said, we think there's something wrong with these books. You're damaging those authors' reputations in those books. And Ms. Katie, from the Daily News record on the.
We're not going into this. We've got questions that we're asking. This is not an investigation. You're not an investigator, I'm coming here today and to investigate the board. The board has come here today and asked us. The board has come here today and asked us specific questions for our librarians.
I'm just referring to a comment she made.
We're not going there. We're gonna do that individually, that's more professional, to the herd, individual. After meeting and asking questions, okay? But we are in a public meeting today, we're coming today to this library and asking specific questions. I will go single talk.
Yeah, I'm really pleased with you. Yeah, thank you for today. I thank you for the most, and it's important, it's important. I appreciate that.
I think what she was trying to say, I don't want to speak for, for Carly, it's just transparency. We want to be transparent. We want to have these conversations. We just want to be involved.
Thank you for that. Board members, are there any other follow-up questions that you have? We're running against, we're pushing them up the clock now. Are there any follow-up questions that board members have at this time? Um, librarians, is there anything else that you all, um, want to share about your collection development or anything that you have seen? If you've reviewed some of the policies, um, that we're looking at, parts and pieces, like I said, I pose this question so that I'll hide. And I've asked, you know, once, once a book is come through review process, it's gone forevermore? Or do we push, do we look at something or do we just not even address that? Just kind of, you know, leave like space there, things like that. You don't have to speak to that particular area, but is there something like that that you saw that you either felt was like, "Yeah, that's really good" or "That's egregious, please don't do that to us"?
I, I, I appreciate you all asking that question and this conversation has been amazing. Because I felt like we really were listened to and that we really wanted to have this conversation. And that we're here to help. So, um, I think they were talking, you were talking about the specific policy that you liked and we talked about the tiers and I would reiterate that the tiers seem to be a really important part of the process. But nonetheless, I just want to say thanks for this conversation. You can tell it's, it's difficult for us as professionals and we appreciate that you guys, we see where you're coming from and we appreciate that you see what we're coming from as well.
I think-
Also, right now, I think we're had a vote formally challenged, but right now we do it at the school level and then it goes to the county levels and parents are happy with the school's decision. And even if a book is deemed to be taken out at the one school, it doesn't mean that it's taken out at the third single school. And I think that's important. Um, I taught at the Gacke'sville and Plains and PQ and Ross South River and they're very, very different. Um, a little girl, I wonder, at Plains, which I felt fun with, but God, we didn't need to be back in the running children. So, very next year, I was back at PQ. Um, a little girl thought that Best Christmas Pageant Ever was a bad book. And I thought, "Oh my gosh, what could she have read it"? Um, because I used to read that at a bunch of fourth graders. And it was, there was one cuss word that I always said, "Oh my gosh, she's been darned". Um, and it wasn't darned, it was the ones a little bit worse than that. But in her family, that was a cuss word. And I said, "Oh honey, let's get you a different book". But different populations, different communities are very different. And I, I really think we need to caution everybody not just pulling out from everybody or every level. Um, at the same time, a group can tell you, she and I, there's been times when I've had a fifth grader that really, really, really wants to be at middle school and I've had conversations with the parents and I verify my parents, your child keeps asking this, "But may I ask this group to borrow it from your child from our video"? And the hilarious thing is, I think I've had it three times in seventeen years and every single time within two weeks, the kid brought it back and said, "Oh, this book wasn't for me". Um, but I wanted to give them that ultimatum and they were really excited about the book that they see in the movie. Um, so we want to give that to our kids. We don't want to make them feel like they don't have a choice.
I'm thanking you for this opportunity. I'm sorry that I didn't go above. I didn't realize the parameter of some of these things were set at. So, I feel very passionate and I'm sorry that it took over for this feeling, but I do have love for those conversations about how we process this and our next steps forward.
Uh, one policy I know I personally don't want to see it is for the committee to say, "Well, you can only purchase these books from your library", because we've said before, like, luckily with books are flat off my shelf, which is a series of books about a little boy who goes hunting with his dad and granddad. And I'm sure it could run, those would not be checked out. So just, that is one part of the policy that I would, I would be devastated if it was like, "Well, you can only pick from these hundred new books" and that'd be it. Like, that would be devastating, I think, to many of us as librarians. Like, certainly, I only need, like, purchased ones twice a year. Like, that would be very difficult for all of us. My bookkeeper may have about everything by the end of December and that is already horrible. And then like, what am I supposed to do in the spring? Like, oh good, I got plastic money to spend. Um, but the county, it's already on, so that's a struggle in itself.
I just have one question. I know that you guys are prepping and preparing for the Murphy Committee's reconsideration or to look at the books at hand. Do we know what that process will look like in selection of committee members?
I think, and board members, you can speak up to this. I think from here, this is a great question that you asked, like, what it's like moving forward. Um, I think what we're gonna look at is putting together a policy that likely be, um, sessions with our lawyers that will, will be looking at, making edits. And then, like I said, for, for me, I think what I'd like to see is two policies, one for acquisitions, one for challenges. You know, and then acquisition policy might have things about meeting and how we go about, um, adding or removing things. And there's just more, just a little bit more of a comprehensive policy on library materials. But then we need something for our, um, for book challenges. And, um, so what I'm envisioning is that we're gonna meet with lawyers probably pretty soon um, and get together a draft. We'll probably review a draft at some point. I think we're gonna be talking about having just a session for, like, just a, talk about a session or just having it once at the end of the meeting, um, for public comment just strictly for that process. Um, one thing that I'm sitting here thinking we might want to consider is public comments we know really long. Um, and it might be, once we, once we get a working draft, draft that we think where we like, that we move forward on, it might be good to provide another session or time where librarians can give us some feedback, specifically just for you all because, um, you're the ones that have to enact a policy, you're gonna be working with that policy. And I don't want you to have to fight for public comment time. Um, you know, to wait like three hours to get a chance to provide some feedback. Because I, I don't know whether public comments would take an hour or if they would take two hours. Um, so that is something I think we'll look at. I don't know if it'll be a forum, we set it out and ask you to just like, provide some feedback or send us an email or something. I do want to get a draft to you all to look at and provide you all opportunities. I don't know if it'll look like public comments. It's part of the schedules, um, to have all these public feedback sessions. Um, but we know, it'll be, we hope, hope, it'll be an information item in our next week, uh, next official meeting, which is February twenty-sixth, twenty-second. Two months from now. We're hoping it'll be an information item. That doesn't mean, um, this is twenty-sixth. I don't think that that means, like, if we don't get a chance to schedule with you or send out a Google form, that you should feel, you need certainly come and speak at the public comment sessions when that is an informational item, but I do want to make sure that you know, like, we're listening and that we will, like, somehow try to collect some feedback from our librarians. Um, so if you don't get that scheduled, like, what I'm saying is, if we don't say, "Hey, on the twenty-second, we're gonna be and you guys can provide feedback", or "Here's a form and that public comment", we have our public meeting on the twenty-sixth and we have public comment, and people are gonna come and speak to the policy or the information and that's fine. Um, please don't think that, like, we are not playing to, we'll try to be better in, like, sharing a little bit further ahead. I think I'd like to provide feedback, just to say, "Here's what we're thinking", um, if you're gonna be devastated by this, here's your chance to provide some feedback.
Um, I'd also like to point out that Virginia Code does allow us to invite whomever we'd like to close session. And, um, it might, the who of us to invite our supervisor, Ms. Tate. So, that might help to answer questions. And she can, I believe in Ms. Tate, you are familiar with most of these policies, most of the local policies or school policies. So you can speak to those who don't have to do that as well. So that might be helpful.
Um, I also want to share that I did invite, um, and they weren't able to be here, which is why we were able to kind of run it over, but I did invite three different people, um, experts in the field to kind of speak to and provide some guidance. And it didn't suit for the three of them, so it could be we can circle back around to them. One is Jenny Martin, one is Sandra Parks, we wanted to meet with her and speak with her. And, and those were the three people that we invited. Some are traveling, some are at meetings. Um, and we're unable to be here today, um, but I did reach out to hopefully get some. Sometimes when you're not in a classroom anymore, it's a lot easier to be a lot more vocal about what it is that you feel like you can't say in your employee. And that was part of my reason for wanting to, um, to invite some of those experts. Um, so we'll reach back out and see if we can get connected with them as well. Um, if it suits everybody involved. So, any final comments for board members?
Yeah, I, I have one comment. I, this is, I mean, our, my concern with elementary was not, I mean, sexually explicit books being heavy on libraries, okay? So, um, we, I think we've got, we were heading in the right direction earlier of where is the line that we didn't, like, get there? Like, where is the line when it comes to sexually explicit material in our libraries? Like, and we can't have one comment today that we have to take the whole book into content, especially if you read passages, as Kate said, today, that a lot of these books that are on that, on that list of fifty-seven are in there. And so, we didn't get it, but we didn't get to that point of where is the line? I, I've heard a lot of us about the six or seven that was on there that wasn't even in our libraries. But you have to remember that we were looking at both library and classroom library material. So knowing that classroom library material doesn't, we don't have any type of record was in the classrooms as well. So we wanted to make sure those books were not, were, wasn't in all of the classrooms. Like, so, so there is, so there is a line somewhere called those six or seven that, that are very extreme sexually confident in there. They're not in our libraries at this time. So, where, where is that line? The line is somewhere, but we didn't get that, we, I didn't hear an answer that. The only thing I got was, that I can remember was, "We gotta read it all in content there", so I'm asking, like, more of a middle of time, because those elementary, I believe, there's sexual content in libraries. So I'm just gonna ask one more time, I'm not sure that maybe you can elaborate on this, but I, I just kind of want to know, where do you think the line should be on the middle of time? Anyone? There's one man in the back, right here.
I'm not a teacher, I'm here, I was invited to come.
That was exactly, you know, there was a lot of use of the phrase sexually explicit and no one asked what the definition of that was. The reality is that we don't agree and we never will. My question is, another thing that wasn't pointed out was whether or how the existing policies that empower the parents to parent their kids and create the boundaries, why are they not sufficient? Why is that not the first place ever a parent is pointed to? It seems like that should be addressed before we're even here. So I think there's an answer to your question. That's the question. And I just want to recognize all the librarians here who have dedicated their entire career to children like mine. And I have one in elementary, two in middle school, and I go to high school. So you are the help, and that's how this whole situation reaches them. But that's the question. You hit me on the head, Master.
I'm not happy to talk to you without a response.
No, I, this is for the librarians, I'm sorry.
Thank you for letting me here.
You're welcome. You can be here. The question was for our librarians here, so where is that line?
That's an excellent question. Thank you for giving us the chance to respond to that. I know you, so I did many times what the definition by the state of Virginia is and that is specifically in reference to instructional materials. And I know we've made a point numerous times that we are not considering library books instructional materials because if that was in fact the case, we would have been using the policy we already have in place for instructional materials. So I think that that's one thing we will separate when we look at that because as you clearly stated, we are not considering library books instructional materials, meaning they wouldn't fall self-doubt into that same definition, which explicitly talks about instructional materials. I think it's a difficult question to ask, where's the line? Because again, as we've seen, we have so many different communities here. So where's the line for you is obviously very different. Where's the line for me versus where's the line in Broadway or where's the line in Turner-Hastie? So when we start saying, "This is the line", we run ourselves into a potentially scary situation moving forward as new books come out and new materials get introduced to weigh them against a hard line with no consideration for communities' parents as they spoke. Because what might be the line for your child would be different than when I think the line for my child is based on the types of conversations we're willing to have. But I do think it's clear to say that when looking at library books, which has clearly been stated, do not fall under instructional materials or else we already have a policy in place for those using the definition for sexually explicit as they relate to instructional materials, it is not the line we should be looking at. I can't give you a hard-asked answer because it's a matter, that's a matter of personal matters.
So you're saying that Virginia Code is not the line that we should have for our libraries?
It specifically relates to instruction materials. And I'm saying that you've been very clear that library books are not considered instruction materials. So, I'm saying that that definition does not apply to, I'm saying that definition does not, right now, apply to library books that are not used in completion of a class assignment. So. Not saying, yeah, look at that, I'm saying that right now it specifically does not address library books. However, if we are considering library books instructional materials then we do have a reconciliation race policy already in place that has been used and has worked.
So, yeah, the excerpt that you've read, um, I've read that book. Uh, that was the one I referenced earlier, then I read that book and said, I, this student recommended it to me. I, I read it. Student came in, said, "It's the best book they've ever read, blah, 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 blah", looked it up a little bit, read it, Lush, Seventeen Shades of Red. And said to Patty, "Yeah, you know, that's not, that's not a good fit for us". Um, there are, I think part of the difficulty in figuring out where there's a line and, and it is evident that there is a line or, you know, there, there wouldn't have been university books on that list that were excluded from our libraries because, you know, we, we all recognized something about them that put them over, over a line for us. Part of the challenge is, at least in my mind, is, is even the challenge when you read the, the code of Virginia, you know, the way they describe, certainly some of those things, I had to look up because I didn't know what they were. Some of those things are, are, you know, whoa, you know, you don't need, like, you didn't need to lay that out because there's no way that is ever gonna make it. Um, but, 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 part of, I think what's tricky is, you know, if we make a list and say, "Well, a book can't contain, can't-" if we make out this and say, "Well, a book can't contain, can't contain the active sense," right? But, but, so the fate of Black scene, you know, that sometimes we all do because we can, we visualize that, visualize that in movies, you know? Does, does that fall? Because there are books that I would advocate strongly belong in our library that contain things like that. Um, you know, okay, so it specifically describes a sexual act. Well, what's specific? You know, and, and I'm not trying to be difficult. Like, it, it really is a challenge to put into, into an exact words what, what steps across a line that we feel is, is appropriate for, for the students in our communities. And, and I will say that, you know, coming from, from a... I'm a little bit improved. And, and, um... And, and so there are, I'm in a situation where if I stay a term actually alone now, I will have nieces and nephews who come through. And, you know, there, there are books that, that belong in our collection because they, they meet the parameters for some of our parents. And yet, if, if my niece was to bring that as a freshman to the collection or to the desk to check out, maybe not as a librarian, but certainly as an uncle, I'm gonna say, "There's a mother that you want me then?" And we're gonna get off, because that's the reality of, of a, a library collection is that there, there is enough, there's, there's breadth to meet the needs of everybody. And, and what I would want, if I had kids, what I would want them reading is not gonna be the same as, as what some other people choose. There are clearly things that do not belong in high school, those who are in elementary, to libraries. I mean, none of us would argue that. Um, and, and, and yet, there are, because, because it's so hard to define that line and explain exactly what things don't belong, you know, we're always gonna have those, where the line is, wherever we, we, we put the line, um, you're always gonna have things that, that we're gonna have to debate which side of that line they really are. Um, whether we move that line from extreme one way or another or somewhere in the middle, does that make sense? Like, however we define it, there's going to be the interpretation, um, that is involved. And, and that really, to, to break the, the conversation of the whole book, it is not us trying to be difficult. But there can be, there can be a, a, a book where a kid, a heighty, a book where character experience is written. And certainly, how that's described matters. But, but that can be something that happens. And the way that happens can exclude a book. But there can also be books where, where the sad reality is, is that we have kids who can have the experience. And, 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 and there are books that, that portray that in a way that is empowering and healing for them. And so that's where it just, it's, it's just really, really complicated. And again, you know, that's not us trying to, to be hard to get along with and say, "Well, you know, we can't really give an exact line." Um, but, but I think that's the reality that we struggle with.
Thank you, thank you for adding that, uh, this meeting today. Uh, board members, anything else? Is that it? All right. Well, I, we will be announcing our, uh, Dr. Shipp... I, we will be announcing our next round of RBDs going forward with this. We do wanna say thank you for coming out today and your time to speak with us. We understand this is a very touchy subject for many of us. And, uh, we are doing our best to represent our constituents, our parents, our community. And, uh, we also understand that we have a variety of community members within our community count. So we, we're doing our best to come up with a policy that represents our community. And that's what is gonna, I'm hoping, I believe we're just gonna do is gonna, we're gonna have a policy that represents our community in this. And, uh, again, we, it's been said that we had a policy in place. We did not have a policy in place. Dr. Shipp said this at the last meeting we had, when we did have a book, a book challenge from after middle school, that our attorney said, "I, after middle school, this work was at, had nothing to do with you."
Wow, I know.
Not, 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 not this, not the last meeting. I think a lot, a lot, a lot of librarians may feel that this is a personal attack on you yourself or us. And I hate that you feel that way. Because that's not my heart or my motive or our motive, you know? So that hurts us. It hurts me to think that you think that this is a personal attack on you. When, as I said, in our, in our elementary libraries, I don't think we have broad sexual explicit material that's in there. I, if there was a book that was in there, then, that we thought was bad, I'm sure that we would have done a complaint with. We had done a complaint. And it's these other books that aren't built in time. Where do we draw those lines? Uh, where that's at? And there were many examples that, that we could have spent a lot more time reading from today from books that were born out of this. And that we can't read in a public meeting at a school board meeting because it would be inappropriate to read in a public setting. And so the question is, then why is it allowed inside of our public school libraries? And so if we can't read that book at a public meeting where there are adults who are reading, inappropriate. And where's that line at? So that's a hard task that we're assigned from our community to come up with, is where that line is at. And that's what we're gonna do our, our best to, as a school board, come up with that line. So thank you for the dialogue. Thank you for coming out today. We appreciate, uh, the responses that we have received. And we will be back, uh, with you with the next step of what the progress we're gonna make. If you do have questions, please see us at the end of this meeting. Thank you for coming out.